Great, so welcome. I'm first going to call to order this, the Amherst School Committee. So seeing a presence of a quorum, I'm calling to order this meeting of the Amherst School Committee on Thursday, December 9th at 6:01 PM. And we'll take a roll call attendance. Please stay present when I call your name. Mr. Demling.
Demling, present.
Mr. Harrington.
Harrington, present.
Ms. Spitzer.
Spitzer, present.
And McDonald, present. So, welcome. We have some folks from the community joining us online. And as I was mentioned, we do have some comments from, that were emailed to us. But for tonight's forum, what we're hoping to accomplish, and actually, Mike, if you could share the screen, I think the first, the second slide has our agenda.
I'm just gonna, it's a little easier with my screen to make it a PDF instead of PowerPoint, so I will be able to do that in about 30 seconds.
Okay, so what we're going to do is just go through a brief presentation on, about the, our mission and our goals for the elementary schools in Amherst for the current year. Talk a little bit, super high level, about the overall budget process and general timing of different activities and developing our school budgets in any given year. Tonight, we're talking about the fiscal '23 year, which begins in July 1st of 2022. We'll walk through some very basics about where our funding comes from and where our spending goes to. And then we'll just open the floor to hear from you all, members of the community, about your priorities, which you'd like us to see the district focus on and prioritize when we get to making our decisions about the budget for the next fiscal and school year. So we can go to the next slide. And that just covers what I just said, so don't think I left anything off there. So, next slide. This hopefully is familiar to most of us, but we find it helpful, especially when we're talking about budgeting, to remind ourselves and ground ourselves in our mission as a district. So I'm just gonna read this quickly. "The mission of our schools is to provide all students with a high-quality education that enables them to be contributing members of a multi-ethnic, multicultural, and pluralistic society. We seek to create an environment that achieves equity for all students and ensures that each student is a successful learner, is fully respected, and learns to respect others." And as I said, it's helpful for us to sort of have that in mind as, and sort of as our beacon and spotlight as we, as we talk about priorities for our budget, because it does inform all that we do. So, next slide. These are the goals for this year, pulled from our goals for Superintendent Dr. Mike Morris. But roughly, and this pulls in some of the region goals, but I'm going to focus specifically on the Amherst Elementary Goals. So obviously, we have these, many are aware of the school building project that's supported through the Mass School Building Authority funding. And so we have a lot of work ahead of us this, just in this year, participating and engaging community stakeholders and partnering with the School Building Committee that is a town organized committee. We'll also be working together with, with the Regional School Committee on planning the move to the 6th grade to the middle school. Pulling together, the district will be pulling together teams to work on academic models to consider and engage the community throughout that process. Continuing a pandemic response, so monitoring, developing, and modifying safety procedures. Being good steward for our COVID relief funds and supporting student academic and well-being needs. And then fine tuning the change in school start time based on feedback from stakeholders. In this, in the diversity, equity, inclusion, continue to recruit and retain staff of color. Professional development on DEI topics for staff throughout the year. Support and training for leaders on diversity and inclusive practices. And to gather staff feedback through the Alana Cabinet on these practices and goals. With curriculum and instruction in the elementary schools, we're develop and implemented dyslexia screener and intervention tool. And review our math curriculum in the elementary school with a focus on aligning it with the math curriculum that we implemented two years ago in grades 7 through 12. Next slide. Moving on to the budget process, this is a super high-level process. Sort of, we just bucketed it into three broad phases. Beginning now and through January, we're looking to gather inputs. So we received guidance from the town, early guidance from the town on sort of the local contribution or local aid. We are, want to engage with the public around needs and priorities, and that's what this evening is kicking off. And we'll get at some point in the next month or two, the, an estimate from the state on the state aid. Then after the, after the new year, and we'll begin budget development. And that sort of pulls in enrollment projections, contracted expense for project, projections, as well as identifying new or changed needs in the school, in the district. And start to really begin the budget, the detailed budget development. And then in February through April is the finalization and approval. Here, the School Committee will review the budget detail the district prepares. We'll have a public budget hearing, and typically, that's, that's the only time that we've heard from the public is at that stage, and that's generally in the March timeframe. Might be in February. The School Committee will approve the line item budget and submit that to the town. And then the Town Council approves the local funding for that school budget. Next slide. We're going through this pretty quickly. Also, if you're on the board docs, there, there's a Budget Basics FAQ that, that the region and Dr. Slaughter partnered in putting together. And that might be helpful, and, and sort of goes into some more detail on this. In our elementary schools, our, our funding for our school budget comes from a variety of sources. And about three, two-thirds to three-quarters of our budget comes from the town of Amherst and, and labeled here as local aid. About a quarter of our budget comes from, comes from, from the state. The bulk of that, 20, the bulk of that 26% in fiscal year '21 was Chapter 70 funding. But there's also state grants and other reimbursements in there. Federal grant, federal aid, which is grants, is about 3%. And there's a tiny, tiny little sliver that comes from other special revenue, other grants, private, and other local grants. In terms of digging into those grants in detail, this sort of breaks down some of where, where the grants come from. Last year, you see a significant jump in the amount of grants funding that we received related to COVID. And that was what was really driving that, that jump. Next slide. In terms of where their spending goes, this is reflecting general fund only, which is a combination, and I'm gonna ask Dr. Slaughter to correct me if I'm wrong on this. But the, the general fund is a combination of the Chapter 70 aid that it, and, and the town contribution to our school's budget. So this excludes some of that federal grant funding. So 92% of our spending is, goes to personnel. And that's salaries and benefits for our staff, as well as other insurance and benefits for the staff. So this, this shows the breakdown, this, these two percentages, so about a little more than 50% of our personnel is teaching staff. And then this breaks down, this is school, it may not be easy to read on screen, school and district administration, support service staff, as well as facilities and transport staff. Our expenses that are not personnel-related amount, together account for about only 8% of our total spending of our general fund. And I believe that's the last slide before the input, yes. So we threw these as, as just prompts to, to start the thinking. These are the areas that the School Committee is especially interested in. What do you value? What should, what in your opinion should the district be focused on as we begin the planning and thinking about next year's budget? And what do you think that the district needs, again, with a focus on the next school year budget? So with that, we can stop sharing the screen, and if, there's a little hand, yeah, Dr. Morris?
Just, you asked me to time that, that was 10 minutes. So just wanted to communicate, I don't think there's gonna be any challenge with this, what you cited before, but just, that was the amount of time, because hence, for public forums in the town of Amherst, the public comment has to be at least as long as that presentation. So that's why I'm making a point to say that here, probably.
Thank you. So, um, so we will, if, for folks that are joining us and would want to speak, we asked that you use the, the raise hand function that you'll see at the bottom of your screen in the black bar. It's right in the middle. If you click that, then we will call on you, and I believe it, it will notify us the order that the hands are raised. So we'll call on folks to speak when, in the order that we see that. Great, we have, Jennifer Page is our first speaker, so, welcome.
Hi there. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. So, um, thank you for allowing me to speak. I wanted to urge you to restore to full-time the art educator and technology educator positions at all three elementary schools. My understanding is that the plan was to eliminate two full-time positions at Crocker Farm and replace them with part-time positions and part-time coverage from Wildwood and Fort River educators. And my understanding is that this plan was not entirely successful and resulted in an unintended hodgepodge of educators to cover the work. Specials educators hold a special place in the development and education of elementary students. Even more than classroom teachers, specials teachers have the opportunity to develop long-lasting relationships with students over multiple years. An art teacher, for example, can teach a student once a week, every week, for seven years, and be a consistent presence in their life, from a five-year-old kindergartner to a 12-year-old 6th grader. But of course, this can't happen if there's high turnover due to the positions being part-time, or if the teachers from other schools are covering a class or two here or there. If budget cuts are needed, specials teachers is not where you should look for them. It's not in the best interest of students to eliminate a source of consistency and safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Other speakers? While we're waiting to see if anybody else would like to speak, Dr. Morris, I just emailed the PDF of the written comments. So we can share those while.
I think Google will take its 30 seconds for it to get to my inbox, and when it comes, I will. Would you like me to display them on the screen like you usually do with public comments? There it is. Okay, I will do that right now. Try to make that a little bit larger. There we go, sorry, it's been funny with the spacing.
Thank you.
Allison, while we're waiting, might it be helpful, I know some people joined after you, your slides were finished and Millian had the good suggestion of maybe just putting those prompts back up?
Sure.
Do you mind if I do that?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, thank you, Millian, for the good suggestions. I'll just bring those up, and maybe they'll be helpful for folks.
So for folks that are joining us now and weren't here for the presentation, these are the areas that, so we have several School Committee members here. What we're, what we're really hoping to hear from, from, from you all and from the community, this, this is the first option, first opportunity for us to hear from you. We'll continue to accept email, and we are going to be working on a form that might be a little bit easier, may not be, for, for soliciting and collecting input from stakeholders in our community. But these are the areas that we, as the School Committee, are really interested in hearing from, from, from you all in the community. What do you value? What should the district be focused on as we begin the planning for our budget for next school year? And what do you think the district needs, again, with a focus on the next school year? And we've just saw some written comment that we, we had received, and we had one speaker at the beginning. And we welcome others. If you would like to speak, just click on the hand at the bottom of your screen. You'll see that in the, in the, that black bar at the bottom of your screen, there's a little hand that you can click on, and we can call on you. Great, I see Annalisa Kitchell who's raised her hand, if you would like to unmute and speak, welcome.
Yes, thank you. I was just speaking on behalf of, you know, the budget cuts with the specials, the art and technology. I think that as a parent and also just a community member, I think there's such value to be had in not only art, but technology, especially in today's society. You know, the, I mean, we're meeting on Google, right? And so to, to go through, go back from a pandemic year into a year, and that's one of the things that, that are cut, I feel like is very impactful. And not to mention, we start talking about social emotional health of our children. And I think it's really, I mean, that's foundational for it. You have art, there's so many different ways to really express themselves. And I think all of our specials are extremely important. And I, I think they would be, those positions should be full-time in all aspects.
Allison, I think you're muted.
Thank you. Jennifer, you're welcome to speak again.
Thank you. You asked, what do I value? And one of the things I value is my multiracial daughter having teachers of color as examples in her school. And I think that Dr. Morris has on his goals the retention of staff of color, but I didn't see any metrics associated with that goal. But, and I would love to see some metrics or just some, some more focus put on making sure that the teachers of color that we hire are, that they stay, that they are supported in whatever way is meaningful for them. And I would, and you know, as, as has been said in many budget meetings, a budget is a statement of the values of the organization. And I think that putting some funding behind that, that goal of retaining staff of color would show that that's something that the district values. Thank you.
I do believe that at our next Regional School Committee meeting, that we will be getting an update on many of those things that you just talked about, Jennifer. So we'll be seeing the annual report from Ms. Cunningham on, on sort of the hiring and retention trends in the district, both districts, actually. It's a ARPS-wide presentation, and that's on the 21st of December. Other comments? It's a quiet bunch. Great, welcome. Lani Blackman, welcome to unmute yourself.
I, I don't have a public comment. I do have a logistical thing. Some of the emails with the, the links had a, had a wrong link. And so I think that may have affected participation today. It took us, it took me a while of coordinating with other people to be like, why am I somewhere by myself?
Thank you. Yeah, we, uh, shared, shared out and pushed out through social. I don't know if it, because we got that corrected after the last newsletter. You're absolutely right, which is why I stress that we'll, this isn't our, everybody's only opportunity to share our perspective on the budget specifically with the committee. We're looking at ways to create a forum, as well as continue to request email or voice comments from folks through our phone line. We have another speaker, Ayumi Parsons, welcome to unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me? I hope you don't hear the toddler screaming in the background. I have a busy dinner happening behind me. Thank you for having this meeting available for the public and all the thoughtful planning you've been doing. As a parent, I have two children that attend Fort River School, one in 5th, 6th grade and the other one in 2nd grade. And I grew up in Japan where the education looked a lot different. And I really do value having art and, you know, the, the music and gym and library, all the technology, and all the special educations. And I personally have been feeling that once a week, just 40 minute of that. It's not, um, you know, it's, it may not seem like a priority, but I personally, as a parent, really do value that special education for our children, and that's part of, one of the reasons why they really love going to school. And any budget cut for those special teachers will, I think, really hurt them. And especially, like Annalise mentioned, coming back from the remote learning and having a lot of even meetings like this in computers. Not having a tech teacher on site every day, five days a week. I don't know what kind of loss that is going to be for some staff on site also. So I hope, I, I'm sure the budgeting is really complicated. But I hope that the IT, the tech teacher and the art teacher would be reinstated full-time. Because I think they are really a valuable asset to school life for children. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, Annalise Kitchell, if you would like to speak again, you're welcome to.
I'm so sorry. I recognize that I, I'm much more passionate. So that little snippet, I don't feel like did it justice. However, I just wanted to kind of talk, piggyback on what everybody else has said, but, and then, sorry about that. But they, you know, consistency, I think is something that's so important. And I think that as a parent, I was kind of just thinking about how disconnected I feel as a parent when we're still kind of in the pandemic season, and we're dropping off, and we're picking up, and we're kind of getting to hear our children's days through our children, which always isn't that detailed, it's kind of nitpicky. You know, I'm pooling everything out sometimes, or they're like, it's great. And then I find out two days later, they did something, you know, amazing. You know, or funny, or, or whatever. But, you know, when I think about that as a parent, I start thinking about what my children feel and how, how they're connecting. And I think without having those specials teachers there, five days a week, that's, you know, very familiar to them. And I think that if we're splitting it amongst another school in the district, you know, maybe that, that school might get a teacher like Ms. Singer, two days a week. And then maybe Fort River gets them another two days. And I feel like those three days may not seem significant, because they're still getting art. But you're not getting that familiar face that you're used to every single day. And then also that outlet that, you know, Mr. T provides, or Lanny provides, or Jim. I mean, all of those are, it's more, it's more than just the curriculum. It's also about the connection and continuity for the children, and I feel like it's just so important. So when you kind of split them up into two schools or three schools, it's really challenging, because it kind of disrupts that connection that they may have or make with, you know, the one student that really needs that outlet each week. Thank you.
Thank you. Other commenters? I'm really not very good at banter in silence, so. If there's other folks that would like to speak, please raise your hand. Okay, Nicole Singer.
Hi. Hi there. Can you hear me okay? Great, hi everyone. Thanks for this. I just wanted to offer that I, I've written up like a list of all the things that have, that have been a real struggle or sometimes lost completely in the art cuts. And I'm happy to share that document with you all if you need. These are all the things that, like, because my schedule is now so jammed that just teaching the classes, like, like Ayumi and Annalise have said, you know, we've really lost so much. And so I, so that document is a combination of here are the things we've lost and also here are the things we can have back again. So I'm happy to share that. If, if you'd like, let me know.
Yes, please do, email that, email that to School Committee.
Sure.
At arps.org, that would be great.
Great, thanks.
Other comments? Does anybody have any questions about the process or the timeline? That might be helpful since we went through that quickly. So we're happy to answer questions or take your comments. Jennifer? Welcome to speak again.
I just wanted to suggest that you let people know again about the raise hand button in case people who joined later didn't hear you say that.
Thank you, that's helpful. So if you've joined and haven't heard, there's, as Jennifer just pointed out, there's a hand at the icon in the bottom of your screen, in the very center of all those little icons. And if you click on that, that will let us know that you would like to speak and we'll call on you. Jonathan Seigle. You're welcome to unmute yourself.
Hello folks, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Jonathan Seigle, I'm an educator in the district and a parent of a Crocker Farm first grader. But I am coming here tonight in my capacity as co-chair of Bargaining Unit C, that's Paraeducators in the Amherst Palom Education Association. I have a short statement I want to read and a similar version of the statement I'll share at the Townwide Budget Forum tonight. So here goes. "The APEA is in full support of the proposed Amherst CREST program and the important efforts of the Community Safety Working Group, including the funding proposed in the draft Amherst budget. The APEA is committed to social justice and racial equity in Amherst. And as educators, we see daily the ways that our students and colleagues are impacted by systemic racism and the chronic underfunding of supportive public services in favor of carceral ones. Some in the community have proposed a false dichotomy that well-funded schools or townwide community, a dichotomy between well-funded schools or townwide community-supported justice and well-being programs. And we reject the assumption that funding other necessary progressive town programs somehow detracts from the well-being of the school community. While in agreement with the Amherst School Committees on adequately funding our schools, we believe full funding for CREST and Amherst Schools will work in tandem. We support our town leveraging the budget process to prioritize both. We know that our community cannot thrive without both. As an organization, we're committed to restorative, rather than punitive, approaches to personal and social crises. We've heard the testimony and read the accounts of Amherst community members and their experiences with the system of policing in Amherst. We understand that today, Amherst has a long way to go in becoming a community that is not only safe for our Black, Brown, Indigenous, and neighbors of color, but one in which all people can thrive. And our goal as educators is a community in which all children may grow, learn, and develop to their fullest. And for that reason, the APEA supports full funding of CREST. Thank you."
Thank you. Other commenters? Your thoughts? So we are, I think we've been, we've had about 20 minutes of speaking, maybe somewhere between 15 and 20 minutes, so. If other folks would like to speak, please do raise your hand using that hand icon at the bottom of your screen, the icon in the center of the tray. But before we wrap up, I'd just like to state, I said this at the beginning, but again, I know folks have joined later, but we, this is, this is the beginning of the process and this is only the first opportunity that folks in the community will have to share thoughts and ideas and requests with the School Committee regarding the budget for next school year. So this, this has been helpful. And we also had shared some written comments that we received through our email. We welcome additional comments at any time to theschoolcommittee@arps.org email address. And we will be working on developing an online form so that if that's easier with the prompts and sort of short answer questions so that folks can have other opportunities to weigh in as we begin developing the budget. And it just, we don't need to show this, share the slide again, but just the process is only just beginning now. December and January is when we're really focusing on hearing the, getting all the inputs, getting all the data on where the state aid is going to be, what the town aid is going to be, and what our needs are going to be and wants for next year. And then sort of after getting all of that input, that's when the difficult process of developing the detailed budget begins. So this is, this is only the beginning. And we look forward to continued engagement and input from the community long before we get to the point that we're at the budget hearing, which is the last opportunity. So this is the bookends, if you will, for the budget process for the School Committee to be able to hear from the community and stakeholders. And so before we close out, I want to just check to see if anybody else that's here would like to share thoughts or comments. I'm not seeing any hands being raised or hearing any hands being raised. Any questions about the process or timing? Seeing none, and I can tell that folks are eager to get on with their dinners and their evenings. So for the Amherst School Committee members, I'm going to make a motion that we adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by McDonald, seconded by Spitzer. And we will take a roll call vote. Mr. Demling?
Demling, aye.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
And McDonald, aye. The Amherst School Committee is adjourned. And thank you to everyone who made time. I know that it's, we've got competing forums, so we really appreciate that you were able to join us this evening and share your thoughts with us and look forward to hearing more as we continue through this process. Thank you.